So we have a DPW public info session for the Center Street Bridge. Adam, do you want to?
Hello.
Yes, please, and if you could state your name for the record. Danielle, can we pull that extra chair right there in the end, if that works? Thank you. Hello, welcome. If you could, both or all three of you just state your name for the record, please.
Sure, I'm Jacob's DPW director.
Rick Wolf, Quantum Construction Consultants.
Anna Geraldi, Quantum Construction Consultants.
So I'll give a quick introduction of why we're here tonight, and then I'll turn it over to Quantum. So as you probably remember, we've got on our capital improvement program for Department of Public Works, we have an 18-foot metal arch culvert on Center Street between Locust and Tibbetts Hill. That is on the state aid bridge program for 80% funding to be replaced. Currently, the state has slotted for a 2025 construction year, but that usually just means that's the earliest we could start construction. In advance of that, they have a, as part of the state aid program, they reimburse for design as well. And we've begun the preliminary engineering. Quantum will talk about some of the results of that. That involves borings near the existing bridge to make sure that the foundation of the new bridge will be supported. And kind of a scoping effort to see what exactly the bridge project will entail. And as they'll discuss, we've got some ideas to improve that area, both from a traffic safety perspective, but also from the stream crossing itself. Right now, it's constricted a little bit by the 18-foot culvert. And the reason this is coming up, it's not an imminent failure, it's not a red-listed structure. It's big enough to be qualified as a bridge under the state program. So years ago, when they were still accepting applications for the state aid program, we applied, knowing that at some point we're going to need to replace this. The invert is pretty rusted out. There are projects that you can rebuild an invert, but it still won't meet the hydraulic capacity of that water course. So if we had a large flood event, we could lose the road there. Obviously, it's a pretty critical road. So best to make sure that we do that on our timeline when we want to do it, and as we can get the 80% funding from the state, all the better. Those metal arch culverts tend to go from the bottom up. So as the invert washes out, similar to East Dunbarden Road a couple of years ago, as the inverter, the bottom of the pipe washes out, the finds that surround that embankment will drift down and get carried away by the rushing water. So it'll kind of have a multiplying effect. And then one day, you'll just have a void at the top of the culvert, if you're lucky. And if you're not lucky, it's just gone. So we'd like to get ahead of this. This would be more of a traditional bridge span when we're all said and done. But that's definitely enough yakking for me. I'll turn it over to Anna and Rick and let you know how we stand with the project now.
Well, thank you. Good evening, and thank you for having us tonight.
Evening.
They have a presentation they're going to share. Do we need to hit the lights in the front?
I want to. He's got a copy of it too, so it's kind of simulcast it.
Yep, I see a blue light now. Yeah. Oh, I see something. It's coming up, yeah.
Entertainment portion of the meeting.
If we can manage to get this going.
Yeah, I'm sure a lot of people want to.
It's just warming up, but it'll just take a second.
Okay, so once again, thank you for having us tonight to talk about the Center Street over Harry Brook Bridge replacement project. Great introduction, Adam. You covered a lot of our slides, so. So yeah, to get rolling here. Maybe.
That's not cool.
Full disclosure, this is my laptop, so if it's malfunctioning, it's town's fault.
It really was working before the meeting.
Want to sing something?
Well, in the meantime, if you're here for the bridge, we do have signing sheets.
Thank you, Anna.
So if you can sign your name and address and email. There are also some comment sheets. So if, like after today, you realize you forgot to say something that you want to say, you can also grab a comment sheet, and then you can just fold it up, put a stamp on it, and send it to us.
I don't know what I did. It's those little icons down there.
And knock this.
Yeah, I think so.
Okay. There we go. So there we go, who we are. So Quantum Construction Consultants, QCC, we refer to ourselves because this is a multiple. We are a civil and structural engineering firm located in nearby Concord. We specialize in these types of projects, the municipal bridge, state bridge aid program, doing municipal bridges and roadway designs. We're very experienced in this realm. We've done dozens of these types of projects through the state bridge aid project, state bridge aid program, excuse me. So municipal bridges and state funding. It is funneled through the DOT Bureau of Planning and Community Assistance. That is our friend C.R. Wilkie up there, does a great job administering the program and the funds. This first bullet item is a little bit dated right now, but it says the program average is 6.8 million per year with an average project cost of $900,000. That has, with the recent challenges and pricing increases, the average project cost has gone up substantially. I would say it's probably close to $1.5 million at this point in time. That's the bad news. The good news is with the federal funding that has been available as of late, the bureau has been able to add additional funding to this program, so they are able to get more projects rolling, which is a great thing. As Adam mentioned, the funding source, 80% of the project costs, that is, design and construction, are funded by the NHDOT, and the town funds the remaining 20%. The interesting thing, the program was actually closed for many years because they had way more bridges to replace than they had funding for. So the program was just recently reopened, and they're programming right now through 2032. So the fact that the town, many years ago, I'm not sure when it was done, but had the foresight to get this bridge in the program, has advanced it well ahead of other projects. So kudos to the town on that. The municipally managed bridge aid process. So what happens for us is basically, initially, the town, when they get into the program, they are accepted, and the funding for the project is approved. And then the DOT has a process by which the town has to acquire the subconsultants or select a subconsultant, and that is a qualifications-based selection. That was us, gratefully. And the portion of the project that we're in right now is the engineering study, and that's why it's in bold. We're preparing to close out the engineering study at this point. Anna, actually, will be digging into the results of the engineering study, sort of the nuts and bolts of the program here shortly. When the engineering study is complete, the next step for us would be the PPSNE, which is the preliminary plan, specifications, and estimate. So the DOT, this is a very specific program that is laid out for us. And the steps to follow are very specific. So after the PPSNE, they drop the preliminary, and they call it final, and it becomes PSNE process. The bid phase for this project is fiscal year 2025 for Center Street, which DOT's, their fiscal year actually runs July 1. It doesn't run, is what I consider my own personal fiscal year. They do it a little bit differently. And again, the reimbursement is 80%. Interestingly enough, the, so there's really two phases when the town puts in for their reimbursement. The first opportunity for the town to apply for their reimbursement for design costs actually occurs after the project is successfully bid and awarded. And at that same time, the town also gets 40% of the awarded bid cost in conjunction with their 80% design cost reimbursement. Once the project is awarded, actually before it is awarded, the town has to select a construction engineering consultant that is not Quantum to oversee the construction of the bridge. It used to be that we would design and oversee it in construction, but a recent change at the state level, actually, the feds have been doing it for a long time. They do not allow that. And I think with the additional federal funding that is coming in a couple of years ago, DOT really started to push this different program, where a separate qualified engineering firm oversees the construction of our design, and we oversee the construction of other designs. So at the completion of the project, there are very specific steps that have to be followed. And the final reimbursement occurs after the as-built drawings and all of the project accounting is accounted for. And that's when the town receives the construction engineering and construction administration reimbursement, and also the other 40% of the 80% construction costs. So the engineering study itself. Initially, one of the first things we do is we have a scoping session to establish the project purpose and need. The purpose of this project is to correct the structural and hydraulic deficiencies that we have, and also to provide safe year-round vehicular travel on Center Street. The need for the project is the corrugated metal plate arch, has corrosion at the invert, and also importantly, the hydraulic connectivity is poor. Essentially, what that means is one of the inverts, or possibly both of the inverts, during normal flows will actually be what they call perched, which is above the normal water flow elevation. And what that does is it creates an issue for aquatic wildlife to continue passage successfully, either upstream or downstream during normal flows. That is also why these types of structures are really no longer allowed, for the most part, to be replaced. The preference environmentally is to have what they call an open-bottom structure, so that a natural streambed material, very similar to the upstream and downstream conditions, can be installed, so that the aquatic life has an easier time. So, and also, as Adam mentioned, the CMP currently is not on the municipal red list, but it does have an E2 posting. So design criteria for the project, Anna will actually kick in.
Okay, so, just like Rick said, there are very specific, yeah, design criterias that we have to go through. So what we use, it's DOT. We have a bridge design manual, highway design manual, and the standard specs that we need to follow, that the DOT gives out. Then we also have some federal specification, and we have the ASHTO, it's called the LRTD. That's basically the design code that we have to follow. We also have the Manual on Uniform Traffic Control, the MUTC, and also the ASHTO geometric design. And then, of course, the town would like to use accelerated bridge construction to minimize the traffic during construction because of the school. So we would try, that would happen during the school's summer break. So the accelerated bridge construction, that's what we call ABC. So what are the existing conditions? Well, I think both Rick, oops, both Rick and Adam said a little bit what it was. So it is currently an 18-foot span that was built in '72. And the invert is corroded, and the poor hydraulic connectivity, basically. Like Rick said, the invert is perched probably 18 inches, which is not good. And also, the bridge approach rails are sub-standards, according to the DOT. And one of the first things that we do in engineering study is the hydrologic and hydraulic study. And that will determine the flows for the various flood events, and the water surface elevations, and the stream velocities. And one of the DOT requirements is that the bridge has to have a clearance of one foot from the underside of the superstructure during the 50-year flood, and it also needs to pass the 100-year flood. And the existing culvert actually does meet those criterias, but the water velocities are very high. And that caused erosion and other problems for wildlife. And another one, something else that we also do in the very beginning are soil borings. So we got a geotech company to come out last summer, and they drilled two borings, one for each location of the abutments. And what they found was sand and gravel, basically till, over glacial till. And on one side, they did find bedrock fairly close. So in our bridge replacement study, we have, oops, that went a little bit too fast there. There we go. We always, according to the DOT here, we need to look at, basically do nothing or have a no-build alternative. But needless to say, that's not very good, because it won't change anything, and the hydraulic capacity will be poor, and the hydraulic connectivity will not change. And eventually, it will pose a public safety issue, as the culvert will continue to deteriorate. So what are the bridge options that we did look at? Well, the first bridge option was a precast concrete arch on precast concrete pedestal walls. So everything is precast in order to be able to do the ABC approach during the summer. And it does raise the costs a little bit from traditional, where you do the cast-in-place, but that would take too long, probably eight to nine months, so that would not work. So this bridge option, that we'd call Bridge Option 1, is about $3.7 million. And then Bridge Option 2.
There you go.
Right, so this is the Bridge Option 2. That's where we have something called precast next beams on precast abutments. And these abutments would be pretty tall, because we have a lot of clearance. And therefore, the cost on this goes up quite significantly. So that's about $6.2 million. And then the other option was pretty much the same as Option 2, but it's steel girder instead of concrete beams. And structural steel right now is pretty expensive, so the price went up even more to about $6.7. So our recommended option would be the precast concrete arch on precast concrete pedestal walls. And you can see it a little bit here. And here you can see the corrosion on the existing one, pretty clear. This is a downstream side. Yes, this is a downstream side. You can see here from the, if you have high floods, it just brings all the sediments down. And it has, ended up right down here. And then here on the new, this is what's called the pedestal wall. So the arch will sit on this, here. And this is from the plants. And again, this is what we call the section. So here's the arch sitting on the pedestal wall. We do need to have some riprap in front to protect from erosion and scour. And then on top of that, we'll put the natural streambed material. And this is what we call an elevation, so you can see what the arch would look like. So traffic control. So the road will be closed, and there will be a temporary off-site detour road. And that will happen during the summer. We have approximately a nine-week construction period during the summer school break. And the detour would basically be around Glen Lake. It's about a 12-minute detour. And then we have the roadway alignment. And so we have a plan. And the roadway alignment will basically be the same as the existing. It's probably hard to see. There's more of a solid line, which is the proposed one, and below that is the existing one. It's hardly any difference, but we do need to have a slope and get the water off the bridge. So the low point will be down here. And also, if you do the horizontal alignment, it's almost the same, too. It's shifted slightly to the north to get away, because the abutters are closer here than they are over here. So there, yeah. So then you can see the arch right here with the wing walls. And the yellow is the roadway. And then we're going to add sidewalks to both sides, so you will be able to walk from Locust Hill to Tibbetts Hill. And part of this program, and I forgot to mention before, in the price, it's about $300,000 of non-participating costs, because the town would like to add these sidewalks all the way to Tibbetts Hill and all to Locust, so you can walk from Locust all the way to Tibbetts, you can go to the school. And so the DOT has agreed to pay for the design of it, but then the town, like I said, would pay extra to construct these sidewalks and do some new paving.
The DOT, through this program, where it is so limited in funding typically, they like to, there's a fine line for them in what is included in the project extents and what is not. So the sidewalks on the upstream and downstream side, or north and south side of the project, I forget the exact linear footage, are included within the project. But then some of the additional tie-in on either end, they felt that they could not fund. So the importance of it to the town in coordination with Adam and discussions with DOT, they agreed to pay 80% of the additional survey and for 80% of the design for those sidewalks to occur. But there is, as Anna said, about a $300,000 cost. They couldn't do the whole, the entire extent of these sidewalks.
Your $300,000 price, is that for both sides?
Yes.
Yep. Why would you do both sides?
Excuse me?
Why would you do both sides?
The town requested it.
So the thought process on this was to include it on the bridge, because with the new athletic fields on Elm Street, just around the corner, at some point, the plan would be to connect sidewalk down that little stretch of Elm Street to the bridge. It's not a great spot for a crosswalk on this side of the bridge because of the somewhat blind corner and the speeds and the traffic. So the thought was, carry, so you've got sidewalk for the, all the residential housing that's on the north side of the bridge, but on the south side, continue on from the athletic fields. And then they would come down and connect in with the existing double-sided sidewalk on Center Street.
It makes no sense. The sidewalk, the sidewalk now, if this had, the sidewalk now is up there by the Wilmont's house, stops there. So why wouldn't you just continue that sidewalk? There is nothing here, and there's nothing on Tibbetts Hill on this side. So if you had it up here and crosswalk, it's the same thing, and we'd save, according to you, it's $300,000, we save $100,000.
So the, I think this one's flipped, so that left side there is the Locust.
Okay.
This here is Locust, yeah, this side here.
Same idea. There's nothing on that north side.
So there is the, you know, with the Phase 3, or maybe it's 4 at this point, on that housing that's right there on Locust. In theory, there are a fair amount of people that are, you know, wishing to get down and walk. We don't want to send them across. One thing that we could talk about as we get further in, and, you know, kind of not to get too far ahead of the presentation, but before DOT accepts any kind of proposed design, we only have ballpark ideas of what any kind of cost are going to be. What we could do is for the nonpart, non-participating sections of sidewalk, we could hold that off, include it in road plan, and be probably cheaper than having to meet all the funding requirements when you have a federal project. For, you know, as we found, you start talking about adding a section of sidewalk, it wouldn't cost us $300,000 to do it outside of a federally funded project. So that may be something to think about. It makes sense from a mobilization perspective, to only get in and out, but maybe not from financials. So we could always pull that piece back, allow the DOT to pay for their piece, just so the bridge itself is built. What I wouldn't want is a bigger version of what we have on Henry Bridge, where we've got a little hanging Chad sidewalk on the wrong side of the street on Henry Bridge, the small bridge now, not the big bridge, down at the bottom of the hill, where we wouldn't be sending people back and forth across Henry Bridge. We'd want to make sure we do this once, do it, you know, get the most flexibility out of it, so.
So if you had the one crosswalk, Tibbetts Hill Road going over towards Wilmont's and the sidewalks on that side, it would take you right over the fields, right? That's what you're thinking?
From, yeah, from the school.
Yeah, so the other side, the north side is really...
The north side is more so for the...
The condos up there?
The condos, people coming out of the condos and across, so they don't have to then cross over at that corner.
Move on a crosswalk right there, and put them in that same walk, so. I mean, I'm looking at the big picture, you're talking 6.2 million or 6.5 million?
It's a little less. So those are options 2 and 3. Option 1 is 3.6.
3.6, 3.7.
Well, 20% of that is still a chunk of change, right?
Yeah, yeah, for sure.
And you add another $300,000 onto it.
Right. I think, I think that's a, you know, a good discussion for the board to have as we hear, you know, once we hear back from DOT, hey, you can even do this at all. Make sure that we know, okay, are we going to include any non-participation work, participatory work? And if not, when do we get it into our schedule to, you know, keep expanding?
It's a perfect example of why it's a good time for us to be here and present the engineering study for these types of discussions.
I lived on that corner for 30 years, so I guess I had a little bit of...
I think probably, yes. Undoubtedly.
And we also have to do environmental and cultural resource considerations. So we, for this job, we need a New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services, New Hampshire DS, standard dredge and fill wetland permits. We also look into the Natural Heritage Bureau, NHB, and there are no endangered or threatened species on this job, at least as of now. And the existing culvert is not considered historical. We also need to look into right-of-way and easements during the construction. There will be some impact to abutters, especially on the south side, since those houses are very close. And so the easements will be required, and QCC will develop plans and easements. And then the town will negotiate the permanent and temporary easements with the affected property owners. And this is, this is something that we'll look into more in like the preliminary and final design, when we know exactly what the limits are. So again, the construction cost estimate for the preferred alternative would be about 3.7. And like we said, $300,000 of that was the nonpar.
So that 3.6 includes the 300 for the sidewalks?
Yes.
So when we're looking at this, we're talking about the 80%, we've got to take, figure 80% on 3.3. Would that be accurate, Adam?
Yeah.
Thank you.
And maybe before Anna moves on, one thing of note is when we applied for the, when you apply for the state aid program, the DOT kind of gives you a ballpark estimate of what that project may cost someday when it's finally constructed. I think if I don't, if I'm recalling correctly, it was about a million-dollar project when we applied in '15. So that's what we put, and that's what we've had in CIP ever since. It's not until you get to this stage in the game now where you get better numbers, and then DOT comes in and says, yes, we either are going to agree with this estimate or not. But they, on a conference call a week or so ago, kind of admitted that they're habitually low by quite a bit, and even more so now the last few years. So it has jumped up quite a bit in the last almost decade now, but that's kind of the...
So your CIP costs are, at this time, are $1 million?
Are low, yeah.
$1 million, and you've projected 80% of that being picked up as a revenue?
Right, right. And so we'll have this year's CIP, it's going to be a kind of a horse race. I think what we'll probably end up doing, unless DOT turns this really fast, is we'll use Quantum's estimate as best we can to generate 2024 and beyond CIP numbers. And then when we get, we're back from the state, we may still be in the CIP process at that point. We could update it even again, but...
So it's not unreasonable to think that we could be, instead of $200,000, we could be up to $800,000, $900,000?
That probably would be a bit much, but I would probably guess $550,000, $600,000 is probably likely, yeah.
And so part of the engineering studies, we are required to have a public informational meeting that we are having right now. And as soon as this meeting is done, we will complete the engineering study report and submit that to the DOT.
What's your estimated time for that, to get to the DOT?
Once we submit it to the DOT, and we'll do that this week. Once we submit it to the DOT, and we'll do that this week, they take about two months to review it and return to us. So again, just to reiterate, this will be a bridge that has a 43-foot span. And since the Conservation Commission is here, that actually does meet the New Hampshire DS stream crossing rules.
Is this a question or...?
No, just a remark. Usually Conservation Commission wants to know this, and we have to reach out to you guys. And like I said, the roadway alignments are similar, both in horizontal and vertical. And it's the, because of the ABC, this is the fastest construction time. And the precast arch is the lowest cost, both during construction and over the lifespan. There really is no maintenance that's required on it. And so our recommendations would be to complete the final design and the permits. And when that's complete, as for the reinforcement from the DOT.
And we would be running out of the traffic going all the way back in through town?
So there's two potential detours. One would be around the lake, and then the other would be up Locust and into Dunbar, and then back down. So none of, neither option is great.
Neither one of them are good.
Neither one are good, which is part of the reason the DOT hasn't really pushed back very hard, I think, on the accelerated construction effort, let alone the school traffic, you know, being down there. So on the one hand, it helps us, but it's certainly going to be there during construction. There may be some discussions with fire, maybe about replacement of anything across, you know, that side of the river, I don't know, but...
Any thoughts of putting a temporary bridge through there? Is that expensive? Because there used to be, the road used to be further down.
The interesting thing is, and they can probably speak more to this, having the survey more familiar with the survey, interesting thing is the town didn't retain too much land when we realigned. Most of it went back to the abutters, so there is some slope. I'm sure we have a few members that probably can speak to that, too, in the audience. But we didn't maintain a whole lot of land, so there'd be the temporary easement and the impacts to even discuss, but then the cost of the bridge itself, I don't know, a temporary $500,000, $600,000.
Possibly more, because it is so buried, the existing culvert is buried so deep, and there's so much cover to do a diversion road on site. The construction right now, they have a 100-plus-foot span bridge and lots of fill, and it gets very, even on the permitting side, it becomes, you know, there are a lot of effects there. Of course, the benefit to the ABC, and I think this is, it's obviously a good candidate for the accelerated bridge construction because DOT, due to the additional costs with ABC, they tend to try to not go that route. But the benefit of being able to cast the footings, the stub walls, and the bridge sections in a controlled environment in a plant, and basically bid the project, award it, and have those pieces constructed and ready to go before the contractor even breaks ground, is the only way that it gives that approximate nine-week schedule an opportunity to happen.
Well, I think this board should probably take that nine weeks off.
I have some questions regarding the recommended bridge option.
Yeah.
Is there, you showed us two others that were significantly more expensive. Is there any, you know, notable, I don't know, longevity of the bridge, or erosion, or anything? Okay, those are just more expensive options for aesthetics?
No, what happens is the structure, the creek is pretty far down, so it's a very tall, so those abutments end up being very tall. So it's a lot of precast concrete, which is expensive. Whereas the arch, basically, it's just an arch, so you have, and it could be further down, and then you have a lot of soil. Because we do have a lot of clearance for the 50-year flood and the 100-year flood. So we don't need all of that.
And we don't have any erosion concerns or anything like that?
No, because the span is the same. The span is the same.
Okay. And then you also, you know, we spoke about the partial easements and things like that. Have you all, or for this hearing in general, reached out to the residents that would be impacted, just for the information purpose?
So the abutters and then a couple extra that aren't direct abutters but close, we're all invited to the meeting tonight. We've heard from a few that couldn't make it, so we'll be meeting with them. This is kind of the beginning of that process, so here's kind of the, here's what is being considered for projects. The abutters have been notified, and now that starts that discussion. Once the DOT accepts an initial design from the study, then we can say, okay, what are the actual footprints and actual impacts going to be? And then we'll have a dialogue with each abutter as we go.
And if GTV could carve out the timeframe for this, we could maybe post it on the DBW site somewhere just to try to do a little bit more outreach? Any other questions?
We have a brief schedule, basically, if we complete the design in 2024 and then bid it in '25, but then also then let the contractor basically have a whole year to get the components. So it's all ready to go, and they have everything. And hopefully, then start construction in 2026, that summer of 2026.
We obviously...
So where would the staging area be for the different components, the pieces of the puzzle? Have we identified areas for that?
Not yet. We have not identified that yet.
So we may need easements, temporary easements for those as well, I would assume.
The nice thing about these pieces, that's very possible. The nice thing about these pieces is they can be transported day of or day before. Many times, we have queued them in parking lots overnight. Like, the first couple trucks, the cranes will be queued the night before. First couple trucks that are delivering are already there the night prior. And so as they're unloading more trucks from the plant, or lots of times, these plants will store the pieces. I envision, we don't control means and methods, but having seen this process a few times, I envision the contractor likely, as soon as they take control of the site, beginning to excavate either side to get down and to get to the subgrade as fast as possible to be able to set those pieces.
But the crane's got to sit somewhere.
Absolutely.
To let them manipulate the pieces.
The crane's on the road.
Yeah. It'll sit...
The crane will be on the road, yeah.
Hold on, just one moment, do you want to add?
So I think Adam could attest to this, but they could easily use our yard, that DPW, to store it.
Oh, yeah, I mean, we're not far away.
Around the corner?
And it's within a mile, it's less than a mile, so I could see that being a staging area.
Well, you state your name just for the record, so everybody knows who you are.
Scott is in, I'm the town engineer.
Right. Everybody knows who the hell's stocking back.
Yeah, I'm not just an angry citizen.
He's also that.
This is going to make my commute to work much longer.
So when would funding have to be approved from the town side for this project?
So, short of any special other manna-from-heaven-type bills that, you know, create these nonlapsing funds that we can draw from, we would want to be funding our CIP for our 2026, most likely. There's, I guess, a chance it could be 2025, but most likely, it's going to be bid in '25, constructing '26.
So do you think for CIP this year, it would be worth considering putting part of that cost into a fund for the bridge?
Oh, like establish a reserve fund sort of thing?
To spread it out over the next couple of years?
Certainly could. The trick...
You'd have to develop a capital reserve fund for that.
Yeah, yeah.
And you can always, you can always target, we could always target unencumbered funds for that particular deal, which we've done stuff like that before. But what he needs to do this year is the 2024, '25 CIP, he needs to get bumped to more of a realistic number of eight, seven, eight, or whatever you believe it's going to be. Hopefully, by, well, it's only next month, CIP.
I just worry about that one-time tax impact. Any other questions or comments?
So some pictures during construction. Oops, there we go. There we go. Basically, construction for an arch, what it would look like, and one finished bridge. So are there any questions?
So we're not, I'm sorry, ma'am, we're not actually having a public hearing. It's just an informational session. So if you'd like to speak with those residents out there, you definitely can. But we haven't set this up with the rules and regulations for actual public comment. Or if you'd like to speak at our second public comment at the end of the night.
What did you have in mind of this?
We can, I mean, we can.
Talking to you.
Okay. If the board would allow any, it might be good for everybody to hear if there are any answers, I don't know.
I don't know, I think we have to post it.
We have to post for a public hearing.
So usually, the thing that triggers the posting is if what you're doing requires a publicly posted meeting, hearing, rather. This doesn't require any statutory posting, so that's why we didn't do a traditional, you know, hey, this is a public hearing session, this is just a meeting, but the abutters are here. So if you wanted to take questions, you certainly could, there's nothing stopping you from doing that.
Daniel?
Adam, this was published in advance, right?
Yep.
The info session was published in the newspaper as well?
It was, fully posted, okay.
I mean, I just, I guess we have to be careful, cautious of what questions were taken, and we can't talk about eminent domain or public takings or anything like that. And all I can do is answer some construction questions, that would have to...
Well, for us, that was more meaning in terms of our presentation because it's a public informational meeting, and usually, when we have them for the public, we do allow them to ask questions to us.
That's fine, as long as it's directed towards our presentation and not to the...
Yes, that's what I meant.
Any legal ramifications that could come up in the future?
No.
Would that be...
No, so this is questions for QCC.
So, excuse me, sir, if you'd like to come up and just state your name and your address for the record? Thanks so much.
Sure, my name is Carl Mattgivin, we're in a butter on Tibbetts Hill Road. The one question I did have was, do you plan, you know, because you can look at the drawings and kind of get a feel for it, but would you plan at some time having like an onsite walk around to say, this is where we're actually, because I think the current, the current culvert's, what, 18 feet? And I think we're going up to like 43. So it's going to, this way, it's going to grow. Just so abutters, the people that may have some impact to views and those types of things, could actually just walk around and say, yeah, this is, on the design, this is where this is, this is where that is, this is where that is.
Usually, we do let the town handle the eastments. I mean, I guess if Adam wanted us to, we could come out. It's probably something more that Adam would do.
I'm not even concerned about, you know, an easement, more of just kind of like, hey, just get onsite, you know, walk around and say, this is where, this is what the plan looks like in real life, not just on a piece of paper, you know?
It's a hard thing. I think we can get pretty close with mistakes, so we can talk offline, Scott and I can be up with you onsite. You got my card the other day?
I did, yeah.
Right.
And also, Adam, that's potentially another way that we could utilize GTV to do like a site walkthrough to explain that, just to have a review of that.
Thank you for that, sir.
Any other questions?
Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much for your time, we appreciate it.
And if anybody was here for the bridge, if you could sign your name, otherwise, yeah, hold it.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. All right.